Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Good evening. Welcome, welcome to the July 2nd, 2024 meeting of the Litchfield Planning Board. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience. The roll call of members. Michael Croto, Chair.
Chair, Director, Vice Chair.
Jay Robitaille, Member.
Rose Amadiano, Member.
Travis Tucker, Member.
Okay, welcome. We have with us this evening Jay Mankara from NRPC, our Circuit Rider. Welcome. And Joan McKibben, our Planning Board Administrator, is here this evening. First item is public input on non-agenda items, items not listed on the agenda for this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to comment or have any public input on non-agenda items tonight? Okay, seeing none, I will close public input on non-agenda items. And we will go to number one on our agenda. This is a site plan application for Ellen Kessler for a seasonal barbecue site at 21 Charles Bancroft Highway, tax map one lot 23. Site of Noel's Tree Farm proposing to serve barbecue Thursday through Sunday, noon to 8:00 PM, from the first week in June to the second week in November. Is the applicant present this evening? Why don't you come forward and have a seat at the table and introduce yourself to the board, state your name and your address.
My name is Alon David Kessler and I live at Seven Farm Pond Lane in Hollis, New Hampshire. And my family owns the property at 21 Charles Bancroft Highway, commonly known as Noel's Tree Farm.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
So this is a site plan application. My understanding, Jay, this is a minor site plan, would you say?
Yes.
Consider this a minor site plan. So with that, first thing what we usually do in these types of applications is to accept the application for its completeness. So I'm going to turn to Joan, our Planning Board Administrator. Joan, have all of butters been notified and all fees paid?
Yes, butters were notified June 21st and fees have been paid.
Okay. Is there a rendering or a plan that was submitted?
I'll give you this one because on the screen it's a little sideways there, but that's what we can do.
So we have this plan that was on the site.
Okay. Okay. And I believe these are in the Planning Board portal, so you guys should have.
And the narrative is in the portal as well.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Oh, and I might add that we had our first internal technical review with all parties, police, fire, and that's on the portal as well.
Oh, okay, great. Okay, perfect. All right. So I do have an application for completeness before me for this application. We have butters notified, we have fees paid, and we have, you have a rendering, an internal circulation plan, and a rendering for Noel's Tree Farm. I would entertain a motion to accept the application.
I will raise a motion to accept the application for the proposed site plan at 21 Charles Bancroft Highway.
Okay. Do I have a second?
A second then?
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of the motion for the application for completeness, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained, motion passes. Where are we tonight? One, two, three, five, zero, zero. Okay, thank you. All right. And just so people are aware, the application of for completeness or acceptance is not an approval of the application. What it is, is it's a paper exercise to make sure that the applicant who comes before the board has all of the preliminary required documents and has paid the fees, has butters have been notified, et cetera, certain things that have to be met before the application can be accepted. So he has met that process and we have voted on it, so now we have moved to the next step. So what I'm going to do right now, I'd like to turn it over to the applicant, if I could. Give us a little bit of an overview of what you're proposing to do for this, this site. And just explain what it is that you're looking for, for, from the planning board. So I'll let you take the, take the floor. How's that?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it and thank you everyone for coming here today as well. My name is Alon David Kessler. I come from agricultural background. My family's been in farming for perhaps a hundred years in the local area. We've been in Christmas trees for over 50. Recently, we purchased Noel's Tree Farm. And first and foremost, our intent is to continue the operation primarily as a tree farm. Not only for my life, but I would really hope that it will be generational and that my children will take it over one day as well. I have, I'm a family man. I'm married. I have two children and one on the way. I would have liked for my wife and kids to be here today, but my one daughter is a little bit loud. She's two years old and she can be rambunctious. And my wife is pregnant, so I came here on my own. What we would like to do is, we would like to offer barbecue sales in, at the farm utilizing the infrastructure that we already have. This would be peripheral to the main purpose of our operation, which is to sell Christmas trees. What we would like to do is to sell barbecue out of one of the, the buildings there, so it's a cashier window, so to speak. And the barbecue would be prepared by a company in Nashua called Willie Jewels. It's a great restaurant. It's right there on Amher Street on the hard corner that is sort of across from Target. It's a fantastic restaurant, award-winning, and really a professional outfit. He does a great job. So our proposal is to, he's going to prepare the food over there and then bring it to the, the farm and serve it during those limited days. And we're doing this to, of course, make some extra money and try to utilize the property and to gain more exposure to our business throughout the entire year. Let's see here. The style and feel of our project would certainly be consistent with the local character of the community. It's really important to us that we fit in. I think that would just be very conducive to doing good business. So our idea is to serve barbecue through the cashier windows. And the customers would enjoy the barbecue at picnic tables on site. We think it would be a really wonderful setting with the Christmas trees in the background. And we think it would be a very enjoyable experience and a nice offering for the community. That's about everything I can think of off the cuff without reading straight from the narrative. But I just want to say that I really appreciate everyone coming here today. And it's really important to me to have a good relationship with the community, and I really want to have a great relationship with all of my neighbors.
Is there actually someone on the WebEx? Was there somebody else on the WebEx tonight?
He was trying to be, yeah.
Is he off or?
I don't know.
Some, so someone is on the WebEx. Okay, all right. Can I ask who's on the WebEx to introduce yourself? No?
I hope I didn't knock him off when I plugged in.
Okay. Well, if he, if he comes back, I guess I'll.
I could, I could also call Kevin and put him on speakerphone if you like.
Sure. I mean, no, I, I noticed there was someone on earlier and I forgot to.
That's the restaurant owner.
He's the restaurant owner. Okay, all right, that's fine. He's certainly welcome to be, you know, joining us this evening. I just didn't know. Like I said, I saw someone on the WebEx earlier and I forgot to ask who it was. Okay, so you've submitted a rendering. Do you know, did the building, did you go to the, before the building inspector, the building inspector have an opportunity to review your submission?
Comments, the building inspector comments on the, the technical review comments on the back. And then he had answered the questions as well.
Is this the one July, the, the thing, July 1st, 2024? Is that what you're talking about?
Is that from the building inspector?
Yeah, Scott LaCroix.
Yeah, that's his answer to the questions about the porta potty and the.
Hot water.
Water, hot water.
So I guess what I'll do is I'll, I'll read this into the record for the hearing. So this is the town of Litchfield, July 1st, 2024 regarding the seasonal barbecue at Noel's Tree Farm to Planning Board. This is in regards to the questions I had after reviewing the above plan. I spoke with Kevin Chartren from the seasonal barbecue and he addressed the questions I had. One, you need one portable restroom per, per 50 people per day, including employees. He stated that they would have 20 to 30 people. I told him if it goes over the 50 plateau, he would be required to add an additional restroom. He will have one ADA portable restroom on site. Number two, as for washing, they will hook to a well and have a portable washing station. I believe they'll be removing any dishes and cutlery. Will not be washing them on site. Sincerely, Scott LaCroix, Building Inspector, Code Enforcement Officer. Okay, so that's from the building inspector. And what were the hours of operation again for this?
We proposed 12 to 8.
Okay. And that's from June said to November?
Yes, yep. So it would be a late start this year.
Thursday to Sunday, Thursday to Sunday.
Thursday to Sunday, okay. In terms of, in terms of employees, how many employees are you going to, are you going to have employees?
Yes, we will. We're not exactly sure what, what our needs will be, but we expect around three, maybe less. But I think three would be, would be good. If we need less, obviously we'll, we'll staff for less. But three would, I think, you know.
It's Kevin calling it.
Oh.
Okay.
Hello?
Here he is. It's Kevin?
Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Kevin.
I've heard everything so far that's been said and I've chimed in a few times. So I take it you guys haven't been able to hear me introduce myself. So yeah, this is Kevin Chartren, the owner of Willie Jewels Barbecue. How's everybody doing tonight?
Doing well. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry I couldn't be there. I'm up in Maine on vacation and I had to. In the restaurant industry, the, the Fourth of July week is a little bit of a lull, so I take it when I can get it. Rest of the summer is pretty busy, so I apologize I couldn't be there tonight.
Not a problem. We're glad to have you. Was there anything that, I mean, I know you said you've heard some of what has been said so far. Is there anything you would like to add regarding the site plan application?
Yeah, so I, the last thing I heard was you asking about if we were going to have employees. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
Yes, yeah. So the intention is, I mean, Alon and I have a pretty broad idea as to what to expect with this project. So it's going to be kind of a moving target with that. As far as how I'm going to be staffing it. You know, initially, I'll probably be on site personally to, you know, work out the, the bugs and everything and make sure everything's running smoothly. And I was thinking, you know, starting with two or three employees on site, not knowing at all what to expect volume-wise. But we are, it's going to be, you know, we're going to kind of move on the fly with that. So that's just what I'm expecting at the onset. If this is a wild success, then it may incur, you know, another employee or maybe two. But I, I got to imagine at most it would be four employees over and above myself on site. And then the plan is to produce and all the food at my restaurant on Amher Street and then shuttle it over and have warming or holding units on the property. So that way we don't have to do any cooking on site. And then additionally use, you know, disposable paper goods so that there's no dishes to be done at the end of the night or anything like that. So we want to make it, you know, not only to conform with the, you know, our site plan submission, but also just make it as, as easy as possible on our, ourselves and on our staff. So that's, that's the plan. But we want to kind of like set the expectation that it's going to be, you know, we're, we're kind of going into the unknown here. And we just want to, you know, have a little bit of flexibility if, you know, we need to shift and pivot if the demand calls for it.
Are there going to be any temporary structures on the site? What, what are you looking to do? Is this going to be all like an outdoor venue where people sit at picnic tables and is there going to be like a shelter or something or how is that going to work? I'm just curious.
Yeah, Alon, do you want to take that one?
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, no, no worries. So as it stands right now, we have the picnic tables. We're not planning on adding any additional buildings or infrastructure. We want to utilize what's there already. I have two, I guess the proper term is hoop houses. So they're, they're like, they're not exactly barns, but they're, they're covered areas that we use to store tractors and other equipment for the farm right now. If it should get so busy and we require a covered area, that option exists to us. That we could put seating under one of those areas. But we don't have any intention to, to make any additional structures or, or buildings, et cetera.
Can you tell me a little bit how the, how parking would work? Is it just, I mean, I, I know that the Christmas Tree Farm does have parking during the season, but how, is there anything?
Sure.
About the parking?
Yes. I did create a parking circulation document, I believe it's called. So we have a couple of options available to us regarding the parking. We have parking that is closer to the street. I labeled it on the, on the document there.
Select somewhere else.
Yeah, there we go. So forgive me, it's, it's my fault for not making a bigger, for not making a bigger document. But yes, there's, there's, there's more than one area to park. We have parking that's, that's closer to Charles Bancroft Highway that we've utilized for selling Christmas trees. And then we have a very large parking lot in the back that's close to 40,000 square feet, so, so almost an acre. And that is a commercial-grade, hard, compact gravel parking area.
Okay, so looking at the NRPC map, it looks like that parking area in the entrance is all New Hampshire, State of New Hampshire land. Is that accurate? And how, are there agreements put in place or is it a public right of way?
Yes, I, it, I, I think the answer is yes to both questions. So we have a deeded right of way on that piece of property. And also of note, the, the, the boundaries on the, the GIS map are, are a little bit shifted. So I think there's a little bit more space there than it sometimes may seem. But, but yes, there, there is a, there is a right of way and it is also a public right of way, as far as I understand as well.
This was, it's this area here, and this is actually right of way. That was set aside as part of the circumferential highway project and it was supposed to be what was called Industrial Drive. So in the event that circumferential highway was ever built, the state committed to building Industrial Drive to access the newly created industrial land that was zoned that way at that time in anticipation of the highway.
Have, just curious if you've spoken to, or had discussions with the fire department, police department regarding access, emergency access and so forth, anything like that? That's an issue that you would see?
Fire department was at our technical review meeting.
So maybe.
And they only had, the only thing they said was he should call for a place of assembly permit.
Okay.
They didn't talk about access at all and there was no need for, you know, anything else for the fire department because they weren't cooking anything there.
I see. Okay. I do have a, another letter here from, to Kevin Brown, who's the road agent. From George, Ellen and George Kessler, about road comments, Litchfield Planning Internal Review. I'll read this into the record. Dear Mr. Brown, thank you very much for taking the time to review our information. This document is regards to the road comments from the town of Litchfield. Technical review comments about debris and road width. For the project barbecue at Noel's Tree Farm at 21 Charles Bancroft Highway in Litchfield, New Hampshire, map one lot 23. Debris. Safety is our highest priority and we are able to make any adjustments necessary towards this goal. We understand the danger that mud and debris can create on Route 3A. Neighbors informed us that in the past mud was tracked onto Route 3A. It is our understanding that this occurred prior to the addition of a commercial-grade compact gravel parking lot installed 2022. This was also before we purchased the property last year. Prior to the installation of this parking area, the customers of Noel Tree Farm parked in a field that would often become muddy in wet weather. We believe the new parking area alleviates this hazard. The new parking lot is a professional commercial grade. Last season and since ownership, we are not aware of any debris tracking onto 3A. Please see photos below of the parking area and condition of the parking lot base. Drive width. The width of the drive to the property measures 30 feet of compact gravel close to Route 3A at the intersection of the drive and Route 3A of the drive flares out to over 40 feet. Please see photos below of the entrance and condition of the drive base. Thank you again for your reviewing our application. Please feel free to contact us anytime in regards to Kessler family, Ellen David Kessler. Anything to add to that or is that pretty accurate, what, from your understanding?
Yes, sir.
Does anyone else have any questions? I don't, I don't mean to take, take over here, but does the board have any questions, any other questions that might have?
I think you've covered most of it, Mike.
I'm interested, so you say it's going to be from noon to eight o'clock in the evening?
Yes, sir.
And it would run till November, you said, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious because, only because I know in the summer, you know, the day is longer. But as we get into like October, you know, we change the clock and it gets darker. So I'm just curious, and it's just a question, are you going to have lighting at this facility? Because as it gets dark, if you're going to stay open till eight o'clock, I'm just saying. It sounds to me like it would make sense to have some sort of a lighting or something to make sure that, you know, people can see. I don't know if you want to address that or?
Absolutely. It's a great question. Yes, we have lighting there already. We have lights, large floodlights that are on, on top of light poles. So we do have great lighting. We utilize that lighting already in the Christmas tree sales. And I think it's a, it's a good point about the day being shorter as we approach the winter time. So our experience selling the Christmas trees was that as soon as the sun went down, it, it just, the business stopped. It really gets quiet over there. So most, most likely, I mean, I, I guess if, if we find that it's really dead after the sun goes down, we'll probably close earlier. However, if need be, we do have good lighting there, so.
I got a question. How do you say that? Are you going to have any speakers calling out the numbers? Like if somebody goes and orders something, they're going to take it? Because I know that gets a little louder, especially at night.
I, I wasn't planning on using that system, so it wasn't something that occurred to me. I would, I would say not at this time that, that wasn't how we were going to do it.
So you're going to have the food prepared off-site, you're going to bring it to the venue when people come in. Are they going to be, is there going to be like a line or something or how does, how is it going to work, I guess, is my question, is that people?
How do they order the food?
Yeah, order the food and then go to the table. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I can take this one, guys, if, if you will.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think the idea is, so if any of you have ever been to my restaurant in, in Nashua, in New Hampshire, it's a, it's considered a fast casual restaurant. So the way it works is it's, it's counter service where people come up, they order the transactions made where they purchase whatever they would like. And they seat themselves and, and then the food's brought out to them. I think the plan is to mimic that same type of idea where, you know, you come up just like you would at an ice cream stand, you, you place your order. And then, you know, you walk over to the side and then, you know, either a number or a name is called out where we, you know, have another window where we can hand the food out and then they go and seat themselves at the, at the picnic tables.
All right.
Does that kind of answer your question?
Yeah, no, no, I think that makes, makes sense. I, I just, I was curious how that's going to, how that would.
Yeah, yeah, we want to make it, because we don't want to have, you know, we'll have somebody running around cleaning tables and things like that. But we want to keep the, you know, the staffing to a minimum if we can and keep everything kind of organized and, and in a way where, where people can, you know, kind of help themselves. And then with barbecue food, there's barbecue sauce, so we'll have maybe a little pump station set up out there where the people can grab their own barbecue sauce and then head to their table and, and enjoy the food.
Thank you. I appreciate the application.
Yep, of course.
Okay. Anything else? Jay, did you have an opportunity? Jay, did you have an opportunity to review this rendering?
I did.
Okay, uh, anything that you would like to add?
Uh, just ask, uh, uh, about, uh, whether you're gonna have a dumpster or trash removal, how will trash removal work?
Yes, I think we will probably, uh, contract a dumpster. Ye- yes.
Yeah, that's, that's probably gonna, that's gonna be a need for sure where everything's gonna be paper goods and disposables that will, that will be a need for, for, uh, for trash pickup. So that's, that's the plan without.
Thank you.
And are you gonna have some sort of a, um, like a food truck or something there, um, to bring the food? How is that?
Uh, just the catering vehicle that we use at the restaurant, we'll just be shuttling it over before opening hours. And like I mentioned earlier, those be holding units where we keep the food at a, at a safe level. Um, you know, with, I don't wanna get into the semantics of it, but with the, the health inspector, you know, keeping the food at, um, the correct temperature throughout the course of the day. And, uh, you know, it'd just be like kinda, almost like a shuttling thing. My, the restaurant is only less than twenty minutes away, fifteen, twenty minutes away, so we'll just be shuttling food from, from over there.
Okay. And are you required to have any sort of, um, like licenses or permits for, um, this type of activity? Is there any requirements from the state, for example, like that, any state permits that you are required to have?
The, the fire department said they have to get a place of assembly permit first, then they go to the state to get a food, a food license.
A food license, okay.
Yep, whereas I already have the food license, I think it's gonna be, it's kind of a, a unique situation where the food's not gonna be produced on site, so, um, it's gonna be almost a, an, an, an addition to my food service license that I already have in Nashua. Um, and then, uh, you know, appropriate insurance, uh, coverage as well. And, uh, and so on and so forth, so it's just gonna be, you know, conversations to be had about what are, what the plans are and whatnot. So what you've already started to do, but obviously we wanted to, you know, work through this meeting first and, and get through this part before we, you know, really got to the nitty gritty of it.
Thank you. Um, anybody have anything else at this time?
Um, just in the narrative, I noticed that it, you guys talk about wanting to apply for a beer and wine license at some point. Um, could you perhaps speak a little bit more to that and when you foresee that coming in, in the timeline?
Uh, sure, um, well, I can, um, confirm that we would like to sell beer. Um, we have no intention to sell spirits, but, um, we would like to sell beer. It does go very well with barbecue, so we think it would be a very good compliment. Um, but as far as like the, the procedure goes, I'll, I'd turn over any more detailed information to Kevin, cause he's much more experienced in these matters than me.
Did you wanna address that, Kevin, uh, the beer?
Uh, yeah, that's, so that's, I think, like Alan said, it would be a great compliment to, um, to having the barbecue there and, um, it's gonna, you know, obviously take a conversation with the, uh, state liquor enforcement, but, um, where I already have the liquor license in Nashua, um, it shouldn't be much of a hurdle. Um, obviously we need to, uh, have the liquor commission come out and do a site inspection. And, um, there's some parameters that we have to meet with them as far as where we keep the alcohol, it needs to be in a locked facility where nobody can get to it, so on and so forth, so, so there are, and it needs to be served in a confined area, um, which Alan's already taken measures to, um, fence off the area where people will be sitting. Um, so yeah, so that's, that's all part of it. Uh, we again just haven't really gone a hundred percent down that path yet because we wanted to make sure that the projects would be approved first before we did.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, Jay, do you have anything else?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. Um, anybody else have anything? All right, at this time, um, I am gonna open it up to public comment. Uh, this is for the members of the public. Does anybody, um, wish to comment on this site plan application? I would ask you to come to the table, introduce yourself to the board, state your name and address if you do. Um, and, um, then we'll allow you to, to comment on the, the site plan. Um, I do have one email that I did receive from Annabutter. Joan had given it to me, uh, this evening. Um, this is from, uh, let's see, from Martha Akerman. Um, to info@northpolechristmestrees.com. Um, subject is seasonal barbecue. Good morning. My name is Martha Akerman and I, uh, live at Annabelle, Annadale on the river. Uh, I met you the other night while you were working hard putting up a new fence. My husband and I love your idea and are excited at the prospect. Maybe some music and cornhole, question mark. Uh, we will not be home for the public meeting, maybe this email could serve as a support letter for your project. If you needed to reach us, uh, call us, um, and they leave their phone number. Good luck, Martha and Joel Akerman. So that was, uh, this is dated, this email is dated July first, two thousand twenty-four. So I read that into the record. Um, is there any members of the public that wish to, to comment this evening? Anybody here? Okay, ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to come forward. Sorry. Should I give up my seat? Um, yeah, you could, you could stay there, that's fine. If she could sit on just, um, at that, at that, uh, take that chair. Um, it's just because the microphones have to catch, um, your, your voice, uh, because we have these meetings, uh, the minute's done for the meeting, so our minute taker needs to make sure that he can hear. Um, can you introduce yourself to the board, a name and, uh, address, please?
My name, excuse me, is Barbara Strickland. I live at one James Way Drive in Litchfield. So I'm basically directly across the street.
Okay.
I have, um, a couple of questions. One of them is, obviously I've been there for sixteen years and I have a lot of experience with the tree farm. And I know that that's a limited period of time and a lot of traffic. I wouldn't expect this to be that way. However, when that happens, it's very difficult to get in and out of James Way Drive. Also, people park on the street and people park on James Way Drive. And those are things that we really need to be careful about. And I, I just wanna make sure that that's being stressed, that parking, that some kind of direction for people to park inside so that they know that it's there. The second thing is, are you planning on having any music? Because again, we hear things all the time from Knowles when they're open, not necessarily music, but just the traffic, amount of people. And if there's a lot of music, that's gonna be another thing and you're talking about every night until eight o'clock from June to November. Is it, I want, I want that to be taken into account. Because it would be difficult to have music every night that, that, that extent. The third thing is, is, I mean, I am concerned about the liquor license. I understand people are responsible, some people aren't. But there is a, there's a huge curve there that from Annandale, from James Way, you can't even see around the corner.
Yes.
And even in the best of circumstances, in the middle of the day, in the summer, people come flying around that corner. You don't know what's going on. Yeah, drinking to that. And that can be a major problem. So I'm, I'm just worried about the traffic flow and what it will do to the normal roads, the safety part of the road and just, just the convenience part of the road as well. Those, those are, those are my questions.
Okay, thank you, we appreciate your comments.
Maybe some others from Annandale, but I just wanted to get those ones out. Those are more of being on the first house. I see a lot of things that go on and maybe other people don't see. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any public comment this evening? Yeah, sir, can you please come up and, uh, sit at the table and introduce yourself, uh, name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Doug Greenlee, I live at thirty-seven James Way. Um, a couple of obvious questions, I guess. You say your family recently purchased this?
Yes, sir.
Um, are you on the deed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we have the owner, that's good. Um, I think that living across the street in James Way. It's fifty, fifty-seven, fifty-four unit, something like that. Um, there's a lot of traffic coming out, in and out just from that road by the residence. How many people did you say you expect to see at his barbecue on a daily basis? Thirty to thirty or forty or something like that?
Yes.
I think that the traffic coming in and out of his barbecue at that rate is gonna be even less than coming in and out of James Way. Be honest with you. But if, if the growth of the business, and I hope you have some growth, it's gonna change. We probably need to set some kind of expectation of how we address that change. So if we come back a year from now and you've got a hundred times, a hundred people coming in and out of there, a hundred and fifty coming in and out of there, different story. Is that what we're proposing we approve today? Probably not. We're approving thirty to forty customers, whatever it is. So I just think we need to be cognizant of the change. Um, if you do have some great growth and some business astute, just, you know, if you grow this, it's gonna change. So I think we need to recognize it, we need to set some level of expectation of what we're proving and what it could be. And what does, what's that next layer of look at, look see, what's that gonna be? And what's the timeframe for that? I think, I think you have good neighbors, I don't think it's gonna be an issue.
Yes, sir.
Um, wish you well, but just be cognizant of the fact that we're some of the customers across the street.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else, uh, who wishes to speak for public comment? Am I going once, going twice?
Sold.
Three times, sold. All right, uh, at this time, I will close public comment. Uh, it looks like, no, can't really go by that clock, I'm sorry. Seven forty-three, um, on this, um, and I'll bring it back. Um, anything you wanna add regarding any of the comments that you just heard from, um, anything you wanna address?
Uh, sure, um, very valid points and extremely understandable and, um, you know, um, I think that we share best interests. Um, gentleman, uh, pointed out that, um, they'll be our, our, our first customers, our, our closest neighbors. So certainly, you know, on, 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 on that level, we, we wanna, you know, make sure we have a great relationship. And then also, you know, just, we wanna have a great relationship with the, the, the community in general. So we don't wanna do anything to, uh, disrupt their y- y- quality of life and, and so that, tho- those are all really important to us. Um, I think that, um, in the past, um, there, there was more disruptions from traffic in the circulation because the parking lot didn't exist. Um, to the, um, to the, uh, to your point about, uh, the, the traffic, um, we, um, we have the parking lot, um, we have directional signs, uh, to, uh, to, um, control the flow. And, um, as a, a testimony, um, that we, we wanna be responsible and do a good job. Uh, last year, um, we, we did hire the police department to, um, control the traffic to make sure that it went well. So, um, I, um, I think that we can, uh, mitigate that by making sure that there's clearly marked, uh, entrances and exits to the property. Um, and you know, as far as, as, as music goes, um, we do wanna have music there. We do wanna create an ambiance, but, um, within reason. We, uh, we don't wanna be, you know, disruptive to, to the community. Um, so, um, I hope that is a, um, good answer.
Well, the town has a noise ordinance, correct? So I guess maybe take a look at that, um, as a reference, if you're gonna do something like that, um. But that's, you know.
It, it, it is a large property too, so, I mean, there's, we have thirty-two acres there, so, um, you know, we could, you know, point speakers or uh, a- away from there as well to help, um, mitigate that, to not be disruptive.
Um, does the board have anything else that they wanna address? Okay, um, so we have the site plan application. Um, what would the board like to do? And I should ask, um, uh, did you wanna put any conditions of approval, um, if you were to make any motion?
Or we, like Jay said, a dumpster? For the garbage, especially if everything is plastic or paper.
Dumpster with regular pickup?
Yep.
The noise possibly, just to make sure we follow up on that and also growth. If they do grow larger to adjust parking and so on and so on, minimum employee people to handle that.
Yeah, does the current site plan like set any requirements on the traffic or is that just a, oh, we're getting a lot of traffic, maybe we should go back to the board?
Yes, I think we should do that. If it gets, like the gentleman was saying, bigger, they should come back.
To come back to amend.
So we can figure something out if they get more than.
You could do that by setting a maximum.
Yeah.
You know, occupancy, maximum capacity.
Cause a hundred and fifty, like you said, that's a lot of people coming in and out of there.
And that should, should that be a threshold based on the daily traffic or, uh, hourly traffic?
Daily traffic.
I tied it daily for now.
Yeah.
Tie it, tie it into the porta potties. Over fifty, they need two porta potties, so I tied, tied it, tied it together for now.
Yeah.
Make our lives a little easier.
Anything else? Oh, um, maybe something to the effect of, um,
Of course.
We talked about the, uh, your letter, uh, to the, uh, the road agent, the comments.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that the mud was tracked onto Route three A.
In years past, prior to the parking lot.
Response was that that was prior. Oh, they're, they're not aware of any debris, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, they put gravel already.
Yes.
Okay, got it, I'm sorry.
Uh, may I ask a question, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, our, our concern about, uh, the limit of, of persons, my question is, i- is that, is that visits or is that, or is that persons per day? Because, you know, we were talking about what if, for example, the baseball team wants to come to the barbecue after their game, you know, and they bring?
But that would be, they're gonna bring a bus instead of fifty cars.
Okay. I see what you're saying, okay.
Yeah, so we have, so we might wanna look at a vehicular, um, limit.
Yeah.
Obviously the bus.
Not per person. Like Jeremy was saying, per vehicle or, like he said, fifty, not per people because if you bring some baseball team, but it's gonna be a bus, it's not gonna be fifty cars.
Yeah, and in that case, the porta potties would have to likely be.
They're gonna have to get the porta potty no matter what, like Jeremy said.
This would be very fluid for you guys, if you guys do take off.
Yeah, I mean, we've got no problem adding more porta potties, sir, it's a relatively inexpensive cost and if, if that could, you know, uh.
Probably gonna get that around spooky wolf season.
Yeah, we, we'd be, we'd be more than happy to.
Lot of kids are gonna go there.
To have extra porta potties.
Do you know, uh, off the topic, do you know how many parking spaces are there now currently in the parking area or is that?
You know, that, that's, that's a great question. I, I didn't figure that out. I, I'm sure I could probably Google a, a formula for that, but, um, it's, it's almost an acre of the parking lot. I mean, and that's, that's the, the back parking lot, in the front too, it holds a lot of people, so, um, there's a lot of space there. Um, and that's there, you can see it there on the map.
Yeah, cause he's.
Fifty?
Yeah, he's gonna get a lot more eventually.
Okay.
It's just, it's come back to us for an update, that's it.
So if we put a fifty limit, then if he needs more, then he'd have to come back to the plan.
If, if you're hitting this number over and over and over again, come back to us and we'll. If, if you're hitting this number over and over and over again, come back to us and we'll, we'll adjust things.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, this is a new venture for you, so it's gonna be sort of a, a test right now to see what's gonna happen.
Yeah, it is, we're, we're feeling our way through the process, so.
You'll come back, they'll all join us again.
Okay.
Be a great audience again.
Sounds great.
We, we just don't wanna, you know, put limits on our prosperity.
Oh, no.
But within reason, we don't wanna.
That's not our intention here at all, just to make sure everything grows in a
Yeah.
community manner in this case, that's it.
Jay, do you have any recommendations on setting thresholds for growth and especially with regards to traffic?
Yeah. I, I was Googling how many parking spaces you could fit in an acre and actually, it's quite a wide range of between nine and one fifty.
The parking circulation plan says that the rear parking lot is forty thousand square feet.
Right, just, just, just under an acre. I, I would think that because these are not designated spaces, you know, you're probably fifty cars would be a good limit.
Yeah.
You know, fifty cars at one time would be, should be the max.
You can get three hundred people, fifty cars, easy. So I think that's a lot.
I would also make a condition of approval, the building inspector's recommendations for the portable restrooms, and we address that.
And the sanitary sink.
Yes, and the, right, and the, the washing station.
Yeah.
So that'll, would be a condition. Anything else? Does anybody wanna make a motion?
So this one's.
Was it all not so complicated?
Well, sort of.
With the conditions.
It's with the conditions, so I think we've.
So it'd be, if, if that's where you're going, the conditions would be, that I, I at least noted so far was the addition of a dumpster with regular pickup. Maximum of fifty vehicles.
Correct.
Correct.
On site at any one time. And compliance with the building inspector's recommendations regarding the porta potties and hand washing stations.
What about the noise, noise, I don't know what kinda condition you wanna annoy, annoy?
Just make sure they meet the town requirements, I guess.
Or meet the town ordinance, whatever the town ordinance is requirement.
It's, the ordinances are not very strict, as far as I can tell during the.
Seventy-five decibels at the property line.
That's extremely loud.
That's a lot.
They would be very unhappy if they were at that and I would be, I wouldn't be able to stand that volume.
No.
You, you could require that in any, as was suggested, that any speakers or amplification be directed.
Pointed to the back into the.
Into the.
Yeah.
So that would probably be a condition, yeah. I would also make a condition as well, the hours of operation or the, the rest of the, the barbecue.
Yeah, the operating hours.
And then the, and the, and the times, the, well, the when it is from June to November and then.
Yes, Thursday to Sunday, from first week in June to the middle of November.
Yeah, to the second week of November.
Twelve to eight.
Yeah, Thursday to Sunday, from noon to eight P M.
So we're gonna cap the maximum vehicles at any one time? Are we going to do any rec, limits on the daily traffic?
Daily.
Just as daily?
Daily. And I think if it gets more than that, I keep going back to the, when it's late, they're gonna have to have a flagger or something. Cause what about twenty vehicles will get there? They need somebody directing traffic out and traffic in. It's gonna be a mess right there.
Not any worse than the Christmas trees.
Yeah.
Usually, the police department does the Christmas trees, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Are you gonna have any flaggers for the barbecue or anybody?
If, if necessary, we would be more than happy to do that.
Might be just, I mean, useful, because, yeah, given the traffic on that road.
Especially at night.
With that corner stuff.
Five o'clock is gonna get dark real quick, six o'clock, you can't see anything. Especially, as she was saying, that curve right there, you're not gonna see anything.
I have a feeling it won't be very busy once the sun goes down, from, from our experience with the trees. But may I ask the, the board one question, please? In reference to that fifty cars, i- this, is that, is that just applicable to the barbecue project? That's not gonna spill over until our, okay.
Correct, yeah, this is all barbecue based, though.
Okay, perfect, okay, cause I didn't wanna put any limits on the, our main.
Yep.
Nope.
Few.
That's all we have in front of us.
Okay, great. Everything sounds very reasonable.
Okay. So with that, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I, I just wanna clarify, are we saying fifty cars daily is the max? That would be like about one car every ten minutes? I had it as fifty at one time. That's what I was imagining, but it sounded like we were kinda shifting in a different direction.
There's a big difference between fifty at one time and fifty throughout the day.
Yeah, yeah.
So what was the, we were talking about something daily and that was what I was trying to clarify?
Yeah, the parking lot could probably comfortably fit fifty.
Right.
Um, we want, it's probably reasonable to have a limit on that so that they don't overcrowd that.
Of course.
And flow into the road, so.
Right. But there's, there's no daily cap is what I'm trying to clarify, correct?
And do we want to set one? Because that would mess, that would, it would limit business.
It would mess up the flow going in and out.
It'd also control.
Cause they'll have to turn people back.
Right.
And that will be kinda not good.
Thank you.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a.
You have barbecue while you're telling people they can't eat.
Like, go away.
We got somebody.
Come back.
Go around.
I just stick with the fifty at any one given time for now. And you, you can come back to, come back to us with any kinda updates and traffic flows and, you know, how you guys are doing.
Yes, sir.
So yeah, that, that's pro, at fifty vehicles at any one time, that, that will allow a good amount of growth. Because throughout a day, there's, like, if, if the current plan is maybe fifty customers per day.
No.
That fifty cars at any one time can definitely
Oh, yeah.
Can allow multiple times.
Yeah, 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 that's a lot, that's pretty good.
And also, I think to keep in mind, I don't know any kind of restaurant or commercial venture in this town that has ever really seen more than fifty cars at one time, except for, you know, kind of maybe the tree farm during the winter and, and spooky world and stuff like that. So I think that is a reasonable kind of limit to set.
It's the only two things we got in town?
We're growing. Slowly, but exponentially. So Jared, did you wanna, do you want a motion, conditions?
I have notes, unless someone else.
If you have, if you have notes, go for it.
So just to review the conditions, we have the rest, the restroom, portable restroom and hand washing recommendations from the inspector. We have dumpster pickup with, dumpster with regular pickup. Maximum of fifty vehicles on site at any time. The operating hours, let's clarify those. Should I say the proposed hours or should I clarify specific hours?
Specifics.
So it was.
First week of June to the second week of November, Thursday to Sunday, from noon to eight P M.
So that's first week of June to second week of November, Thursday to Sunday, noon to eight P M.
Yes.
And measures taken to ensure audio is, audio played is directed away from Abutters.
And the flaggers, please.
Uh, so what would that entail exactly?
Flaggers to direct parking.
Yeah.
As needed.
As needed. They're gonna need it, yeah. Yeah, in and out from that.
So flaggers to direct traffic as needed?
Yes.
Yeah, anything else? Okay.
Just, I, I prob, maybe add, well, I mean, so obviously, they have requirement to get their permits for liquor and stuff like that. Conditioned on state per.
Yeah, food license.
License, well, I, I think they have that, but at least for this venue, you know, the, the permits, approval permits, you know, the regular, like we do with standard conditions.
Right, yeah, and, and necessary state and local permits.
Any necessary statements, like that.
That included the gathering permit.
Yes, the assembly, yeah, place of assembly.
Okay, anything else?
I can't think about any of that else.
You got it all?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the site plan for the seasonal barbecue at twenty-one Charles Bancroft Highway, tax map one, lot twenty-three. To, to accept the plan with the conditions being the implementation of the portable restrooms and hand washing, s, hand wa, washing station as per the inspector's recommendations. A dumpster noted with regular pickup, maximum of fifty vehicles on the site at any time. The, with operating hours, June, or the first week of June to the second week of November, Thursday to Sunday, noon to eight P M. Measures taken to ensure audio played is directed away from Abutters. Flaggers present to direct traffic as needed. And food, place of assembly and any other state and local permits acquired.
Okay. I have a motion for conditional approval, do I have a second?
A second, huh?
A second, by Tucker. Travis, I'm sorry. Any, any further discussion? All right, we'll take a vote. All those, based on the conditional approval, all those in favor of the conditional approval for twenty-one Charles Bancroft Highway, tax map one, lot twenty-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained. Motion passes five zero zero. All right.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Wish you the best of luck.
Good luck.
Thank you, really appreciate it.
Bye, Jerry.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Next item on the agenda is a conditional use permit for detached accessory dwelling unit at two thirty-six Charles Bancroft Highway, tax map nine, lot seventy-five.
Works well.
Good luck.
Owner, Richard LaSalle, Mr. LaSalle, why don't you, if you can come forward and introduce yourself to the board?
My builder is here, Brian Smith, so if he can come up, if it's appropriate. As I was, Rich LaSalle, two thirty-six Charles Bancroft Highway. As I was preparing to come here tonight, I realized that I've been living here in town for forty-five years and never been to a planning board meeting. So I, I don't know whether that's good or bad, but I am here. Two things, first of all, I want you to know that as planning board members, as humble planning board members, you have a tremendous impact on the town. And one of the things that I wanted to illustrate that is when somebody drives into town and they go to Dare Upon to a soccer game or whatever, they drive down Albuquerque Avenue. And it's a tremendous thing, and I think Jay will admit that it's rather unique that to have a road like this coming into town. And it was a humble planning board member by the name of Ed Albuquerque that had that vision. And he never, he didn't live to see the completion of that highway. But it's such a tremendous thing. And I just, like I say, yeah, I, I have all the respect in the world for the impact that you folks have on the town. I'm here to apply for an auxiliary dwelling unit. And these are, have become all the rage because of the housing crisis that we have here in southern New Hampshire and in New England in general. I don't know if you folks are familiar with our house, but our house was built in seventeen seventy-one. And in my, I'm seventy-five years old and my health is deteriorating. I am confined now to the first floor of the house because I can't go up the stairs. So I was thinking, you know, we'd love to stay in our house because where are we gonna go, you know? But the house is just really not conducive. I, I assume that within a few years, I'm not even gonna be following this around, I'm gonna be pushing something. So talked with our builder and we decided that if we had a one-floor, very small apartment, that would be wonderful. The other, the second part of that is our youngest child is forty-something. And she is single, lives in a one-bedroom apartment in Manchester. Is paying twenty-three hundred dollars a month and that is going up. And it's not the most, it's not the best place in the, in the world for her to live. So it's sort of a win-win-win situation from my standpoint. She, she will move into this apartment to begin with until we are required and then we'll swap, she'll ma, move into the main house. And my wife and I will move into the apartment. In talking with, with Brian, the builder, it seems that the, the apartment, or the, the garage that we're converting into a, into an apartment is perfect for this sort of thing. With the exception of the roof does not meet the snow load requirements for an occupied dwelling. So that's something that we're going to have to correct. Other than that, it, it seems to be a fairly straightforward thing. But as a way of introducing the project, that's what I have.
Okay.
I have, um.
Yes, Joan.
It was on the portal, but this, it did come out very dark, so I have.
So this is the garage behind the house, correct, Rich?
Yes, if you're looking from three A, across from Griffin, if you look back behind.
It's right up on the screen.
Oh, there you go. It's the blue roof there with the, the skylights are facing, yeah, there's five skylights there. So what we're doing is we're, we're building on the north side of that. If you look, there's, there's a two-car garage door. We're, we're splitting the garage sort of in half and eliminating the two-car garage and putting in a one-car garage. And then everything on the north side will be the apartment. The septic system on our house is on borrowed time. So what we're planning to do is put in a six-bedroom septic system that will suffice for both places. And we'll pump, pump it.
Pump up.
Yeah. So that'll, that'll kind of, hopefully that works for the benefit of everyone involved.
Joan, I know Abutters do not have to be notified for these projects, were there any fees paid for this or?
Yes, there were, we have to swap checks because I, uh.
Okay. And Jay, did you have an opportunity to take a look at the rendering at all or?
I did, it, it seems pretty straightforward, it's within an existing building, which is kinda very much what the ordinance contemplates, it fits within.
Do you think we have? Do you think we have everything we need for an application for completeness?
I think so. We 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 do have, uh, you know, submitted rendering is ideal, but we we were able to look at the tax map and because it's an existing building, we don't really need another site plan to show where things are on the property. So the board could accept that.
So I guess I would entertain, uh, if we have um the fees paid and we have what was required, I would entertain a motion to accept the application for completeness. To make that motion. Okay. Are you making the motion or seconded it?
Seconded.
Oh, you seconded it. Uh, who made the motion?
You did.
Oh, I said I entertain the motion.
I will happily make the motion to accept.
Who's on first? Um, so you.
I will happily make the motion to go ahead and accept this plan.
And you're gonna second. Okay. So I have a motion by Jeremy and a second by Rose. Is there any further discussion? And this is only for the application for completeness. All those in favor of the application for completeness, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed abstained. Motion passes five zero zero. Okay, got that out of the way. Um, anything else you wanna add, Mr. LaSalle?
No, not really.
Uh, anything that your um your builder would like to add um or let the planning board know? Or did he cover everything? Okay.
Big situation for Rich. You know, they have his daughter. Air game sense. Rich might be able to take all of the uh sound structure. It's just the the roof ra- uh trusses in center, four foot on center. So we gotta fill it in.
Yeah.
I spoke to the builder. Scott, I he's new. I first I deal with him, but uh yeah, I mean, we're gonna use that. Building has its own electrical service too. Solar meter, everything already. The new septic system will be carried in uh when they're doing the main house. It's just Rich mentioned win-win. This is like a win-win for one level living, which uh I found a little bit of work for Rich and those wheels are wearing down and he needs to kind of keep it up.
One level.
Yeah. But no, I I hope I know.
So typically, um, this is an accessory dwelling unit. Um, there was an um um a an amendment that passed back in two thousand twenty-one for conditional use permits regarding accessory dwelling units, whether attached or detached. And so I am gonna refer to the um, I believe it's the zoning ordinance two thousand twenty-one. Or twenty-two, I'm sorry. It's um section five oh seven point zero six, which is under conditional use permits. And it says here pursuant to the authority provided in uh New Hampshire RSA six seventy-four twenty-one, planning board may grant a conditional use permit for detached accessory dwelling units in the residential district. In addition to the performance standards provided um in this uh in the section, the following criteria must be satisfied for the planning board to grant a conditional use permit for a detached A D U. So what I'm gonna do is right now, um, I'm just gonna go through these. Um, you can say yea or nay. Um, I suspect that most of these are apply so and that they have been fulfilled. So um the first one um under the conditional use permit is the detached A D U shall be located only in the side or rear yard of the property, which appears that it is uh based on um what we see on the screen. Um, the detached A D U shall not contain more than two bedrooms.
Only one.
Only one bedroom, so you you meet that. Uh, parking and driveway access for the A D U shall be provided in a location and manner that maintains the single-family appearance of the property. Um, there are no additional curb cuts shall be provided. Um, the detached A D U shall be developed within an existing garage, barn, or other similar outbuilding, or shall be designed to be consistent with the character and appearance of accessory buildings customary for a single-family dwelling, such as a garage, barn, or uh other outbuilding. Detached A D U shall be located on the same lot as the primary dwelling. And uh said lot shall not be subdivided in a manner that results in the separation of the detached A D U from the primary dwelling unit. And finally, um, the detached A D U primary dwelling or lot shall not be converted to a condominium or any other form of legal ownership distinct from the ownership of the primary dwelling. Uh, to sh- to assure compliance with the requirement, property owners at the time uh the A D U is established shall be required to execute uh what is known as a a restrictive covenant running in favor of the town, which shall be recorded in the Hillsborough County Registry of Deeds and a copy provided to the building inspector prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. So those are the requirements uh regarding A D Us, uh detached A D Us for the conditional use permit requirements for the town of Litchfield. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Um, Jay, do you have anything else?
No, I just say that um i- i- if a motion to approve is is gonna be made, you may also wanna add the condition. I'm sure the building inspector would require it, but um it's the middle of an approved si- a six-bedroom septic system plan.
Okay. Um, if the board doesn't have any questions, what I'm gonna do at this time, I'm gonna, in fairness, open it up to public comment. Any members of the public wish to comment on this application? Uh, I don't see too many people in the in the audience. Um, but I will open it up to public comment at this time. And seeing there is nobody here, I'm gonna um at this time close public comment at seventeen. Okay, bring it back to the board. Um, so this is a conditional use permit. It's a um an application for a detached A D U. Um, did anybody have anything else lastly? Did they wanna make a motion um with conditions or what what would the board like to do?
Give us what the word. Just cut and dry.
Yeah. I'll I'll make a motion to conditionally approve the conditional use permit for a detached accessory dwelling unit, two thirty-six Charles Bancroft Highway, tax map nine lot seventy-five owned by Rich LaSalle's with the condition that um a six-bedroom septic plan is submitted.
All right.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. And that it complies obviously with the conditional use permit for five oh seven point zero six. Okay, that we we just went through, uh A through G. Okay. Um, I have a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Jared. Uh, any further discussion? All right, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the motion um for this, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed abstained. Motion passes five zero zero. Okay, very good.
Thank you, folks. Good luck with everything.
Thank you, yes.
Good to see you, Travis.
Good to see you as well.
I will talk to your wife tomorrow about the checks.
Okay, I I'll I'll give you a sign check tonight.
Oh, okay.
It's not that I'm paying her off or anything. Hundred and twenty-five, Eva.
Yep.
Town of Litchfield.
Okay.
Do you really have a question? To take the register.
So uh the next item on the agenda at number three is the review of the planning board bylaws. Did anybody have an opportunity to look at those? I know we've been kind of going back and forth. Um, I just wanna make sure that everything looks good and that everyone's satisfied with them. Um, and that you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I don't think there's anything that needs to be changed, um, but we just need to make sure that they're updated. Um, and um, so is anyone interested in making a motion to approve them?
There was some discussion last time, but I don't think any changes were made.
All right.
They're adjusting.
I think the proposed change was by Joan regarding uh clarifying the um relation to the applicant.
Okay.
Yeah, and that that I think if we just, on item two, I think that what I put on the bottom and item two just separate that. I don't have mine with me, but where it says.
Have a good night.
Night. What was item?
It says is related to the applicant or an abutter.
Yeah, if we if we separate, it says or an abutter?
Yeah.
Oh, all right, then I think that covers it.
I'm sorry, where is this thing in?
Uh, this is page uh section four of.
Officers and duties?
Officers and their duties.
Okay, and.
A four.
What, number four?
Yeah, so it looks like it might.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, the the bylaws seem pretty s- uh straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't really see anything that popped out. Um, did you want to make a motion based on the the amendment?
I uh I don't, I think we we decided that maybe we don't need to amend it. Yeah.
Okay, so what about just just a regular motion to approve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully it is.
So I'll make a motion to um approve the um Town of Litchfield Planning Board bylaws amended May nineteenth, two thousand fifteen. I'll second that.
Okay. Um, I have a motion. I have a second. Any further discussion? So when you say amended, so do we wanna amend them to now? Right, we wanna amend them to current.
Well, Jared's is referencing the last amendment that it was.
The last amendment was ma- oh, you, okay, I I just wanna make sure I understood. Okay. All right. Okay. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed abstained. Motion passes five zero zero. Thank you. All right, done with that. Uh, committee reports. Any reports from any committees? Um, Jeremy, I'll start with you. I know you're.
Yep. Yeah, we met last uh last Wednesday at the fire station. Uh, we are currently in great need of people to volunteer for our little work work groups to help finalize our proposal for the board of selectmen. So if anyone would like to come to our next meeting, it'd be fantastic. We are gonna have a semi-scheduled meeting on July sixteenth from six to seven here prior to our next planning board meeting. And then our next full meeting will be the end of July, uh which would be July thirty-first. So yeah, so anyone wants to help out would be greatly appreciated. Just come down and see uh see Kimberly Queen in the uh uh town hall.
Great.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the um, so there is no conserva- I can't imagine, there's no conservation meeting on July fourth, right, Joan?
Right, July eleventh.
It's been moved to July eleventh um for the Conservation Commission meeting. Uh, is that at the fire station at six thirty?
Uh, no, here.
It's gonna be here in town hall at six thirty. Um, I did attend the National Regional Planning Commission Commissioners round meeting um regarding the circumstantial highway. Jay, did you wanna mention that?
For this, so I I guess the most significant thing was that the um circumstantial highway was removed from the Transportation Improvement Program um because it is um, I think at this point probably signed, but it's uh being removed from the state's tenure um Transportation Improvement Plan, so the the ten-year plan. So that means that at least at this point, um, the the project is dead. Um, of course, somebody could revive it at some point, but um it seems that that's increasingly unlikely. So uh what that will leave in, you know, the next question, I guess, will be what happens to the land that remains the right-of-way? There's a significant amount of right-of-way in Hudson and all this area here is part of the right-of-way uh that remains in Litchfield.
I believe the board of selectmen is looking into that.
Yes, has drafted a letter.
Okay, um, there's, I haven't heard anything from the lower mayor, mayor of the advisory committee. Uh, capital improvement committee um will meet on June twenty-ninth. Actually, I'm sorry, July twenty-ninth. Um, I don't think I'm gonna be at that meeting though. I may have to get coverage, so, 'cause I'll be on, I will actually be away. I'll be in Canada, so. Um, and that's it. I have nothing else. Um, Jay, do you have anything else from our P C?
I do not.
Joan, do you have anything?
No.
Can I make one small note?
Yeah.
Um, back to economic development committee, I did make a miss- misspoke there. Come see um Kimberly Kleiner at town hall to get onto that board, not Kimberly Queen.
Okay. Um, and uh I was gonna mount this under any of the, well, I'll save it for any of the business. Um, approval of the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Do you have any opportunity to look at those? Have any questions, changes?
I have some.
Yeah.
Proposed changes.
Okay.
Um. So um in the last meeting, we had another A D U um being reviewed. And we um, there was a time when uh Jay was talking, and I were talking about the bedrooms. And it states in the minutes that's two bedrooms, but that was initially said and then we corrected it to, oh, it's two bathrooms, one bedroom, one den.
Okay.
What what page are you on?
That is um.
It's page two?
Page two, one paragraph from the top.
Two.
Yeah. Yeah, where it says discussion followed. Do you see where that says regarding the A D U's?
Yes.
It's that last sentence you added, the A D U has two bedrooms. You said it's two bathrooms.
Yeah, one bedroom, two bathrooms.
Right, in this case, though, it the den counts as a bedroom in that in that plan.
Or it doesn't?
No, it doesn't because it doesn't have.
No, it does. It has a closet.
Yeah.
It has a closet.
It has a closet?
Yeah, yeah, it does. It's labeled a den, but it qualifies as a bedroom per code.
Yep.
So, but.
Unless they don't put a smoke detector in there, which I don't know why they wouldn't, but who knows? So.
So just strike, yeah.
The plan said then.
Two ba- two bathrooms?
Two bathrooms, one bedroom.
One bedroom, one den.
One den. Uh, and e- even if you, if it if they change it in the future to two ba- two two beds, um, it's still within the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's still within the allowance of the conditional use permit. And um on page three, um. The final document shows all changes in track changes. Is that the wording that we wanted for that?
Paragraph two.
Yeah, again, the first first sentence of the second paragraph of page three. In track changes. I know we um highlighted.
Right, I don't know if that might have been, whether it's yellow or.
Yeah, 'cause it it's stated that um existing regulations of white, new amendments in red or blue or red.
Right.
Um, is tre- all changes in track changes. Is that the word we want? That doesn't really make much sense to me.
I've never heard that said.
Yeah. Um.
Future changes.
Yeah, it must have been maybe a color or something. Um.
Yeah. We could say the final document shows uh all changes highlighted.
Right.
Yeah, with existing blah 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 blah. So replace in-track changes with highlighted.
Highlighted.
Did anyone else uh find anything else? There's a lot of discussion um for the.
Yep.
Regulations. Oh, always possible something's missed. There's a lot, lot of facts and stuff in the minutes that a challenged effect check.
Right. I have nothing.
Oh, well, I know, but we just voted on the by- bylaws, but um it does say here there was a discussion about clarifying the role of the secretary and clerk.
Yeah, we've ta- we talked about it afterwards about we have the note taker as it is. Yeah, we talked, we talked about it afterwards about, we have the note taker as it is, and it's more of a, because we have that, we can leave it where it is for now.
Yeah.
So, that was a bigger concern about it.
Yeah, because it says that you can have it, uh, designated.
Right, yeah.
Like assistance as necessary.
Yeah, the only thing we saw on there was, I'm, I guess, I'm your backup for signing off on planning services coming in.
Yeah.
That was a lot aware of.
Mm-hmm. Cause, yeah, sometimes after the meetings, you're signing stuff.
Right, right, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
You might need to take over. So in the event that you're gone and there are things that need to be signed.
Mm-hmm, right.
Maybe me and him stay.
Right.
Sure. I understand. Um, so this is good, then? We don't have to?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanna make sure. Anything else, Jared?
Nothing that I caught.
Anybody else? Do you wanna entertain a motion, uh, to approve as amended?
As long as everyone's confident in it?
Yeah, everyone's.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the amended June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes.
Okay, I have a motion by Jared. Do I have a second?
I'll second Jared's motion to approve the June eighteen minutes.
By Jeremy.
Our minutes.
Um, any discussion? I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four minutes of Litchfield Planning Board as amended, uh, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, abstained? Okay. Oh, you weren't here, were you, Rose? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I wasn't, yeah.
Okay, so you're abstaining?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, motion would pass for zero, zero one.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Uh, and any other business? Well, I guess I just wanted to say, um, we do have a sign out front that says planning board members needed. Um, so we're gonna beat the drum tonight and, uh, ask, you know, members of the town have an interest in the planning board, um, to, uh, see Joan at town hall, get an application, uh, fill it out. You can have, come before us one of the meetings and, um, we will, uh, review your application. And, um, we can get you to the board of selectmen for, um, recommendation for approval if you're interested. Um, we do need members, so I encourage everyone who has an interest in planning. If you have an interest, please, um, please get out and, um, come on down to the town hall and get an application or fill one out online, or however you do it, and, um, we'll get you on the agenda.
And we also need alternates, so.
Alternates as well, yes. So we do have opportunity for alternate members.
If you don't wanna commit.
If you don't wanna commit, um.
We'll take any help, anything we can.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so, please, um, sign up and, uh, join us. Thank you. Uh, anything else? Joan, do you have anything?
No, and I have no cases for July sixteenth.
Okay. Um, so there's been a request made by the planning board administrator. Do we wanna forego the, um, July sixteenth planning board meeting?
Are the, um, changes for, like, obviously, we're not in a rush, a huge rush anymore, but our, we just do wanna make changes to the regulations.
Stormwater?
The stormwater, the stormwater's on the score.
Yes.
Yeah, we, I haven't seen the drafts yet from the consultant. I'm sure we'll be getting them soon.
So he's still working on them, then?
So that will be ready in maybe, not the next meeting, which will, might cancel, but the one after.
Should be ready for August, yeah.
Okay.
So does anyone feel like, do you wanna just, um?
If we're fairly confident they'll be ready for next meeting, I, I'm okay, I'm okay, I'm canceling the sixteenth.
Okay. All right, so I guess, no meeting on the sixteenth?
Okay.
So.
So what, do, what did you wanna do on the sixteenth?
Uh, I guess.
We're gonna, we're not gonna have a meeting.
No meeting, yeah.
At some point, we should, um, start doing workshops on.
Oh, yes.
Other regulations other than.
I agree. I absolutely agree about that.
Um.
When would we like to, uh, get going?
I'd like to, probably the meeting after, or if we can, if we can.
The sixth?
Yeah, the sixth of August.
Yeah.
One, one of the, um, first things that the buildings, new building inspector said is why is the planning board doing detached ADUs that it could just go to, through the building department like attached ADUs do?
Okay.
So that's something to think about.
Right, cause that'd be zoning, a zoning amendment.
Zoning amendment, okay. Um, obviously, if the building inspector wants to come to that meeting in August, if we have a discussion about that, we're certainly welcome to have them.
That would be good to, you could meet him.
To discuss that if he has an issue with it. Um, something to consider, so. And if he has any other ideas, uh, for site plan or anything, you know? And if anybody else has anything, we can talk about it at the August meeting. And, uh, we'll do, we'll do a workshop as part of that.
Yeah, whatever, to me. Yeah, I guess whatever day has the lighter agenda.
Right.
Right, so. Okay, very good. Um, Jay, do you have anything else?
I do not.
Anybody have anything else? Okay. Well, then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
A second.
I have a second, or?
Yeah, all right, all those in favor?
We gotta write this.
I, we gotta write this down. All right, motion passes five zero zero. Thank you for joining us this evening. Uh, everybody have a happy Fourth of July. And, um, we will see you, uh, in August. Have a good night.
Yeah, I got a message from Alan who wants to thank everyone, and he's very excited.
Very excited.
Very excited.
Hope everybody gets, uh, working the FIFR, right?
Yeah, well.